Please rise for the invitation by Reverend Deacon Barbara Burns of Episcopal Church of the Epiphany.
Almighty God, as we start a new year, we pray that you send down upon those who hold office in this city the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We ask God to guide these proceedings so God's will might be done. We give many thanks and appreciation and gratitude for the work of our city's public servants. And we pray too for the poor, hungry, and neglected, that their cries for daily bread may inspire works of compassion and mercy to whom much has been given. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Most thankful presentations. Do we have a motion to adjourn the minutes to 7:18?
Make a moment.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed no. It's unanimous, all members are present. At this point, I'd like to make a motion that we allow anyone to speak who wants to speak about a specific agenda item.
Say it.
Motion by Wright, second by Seaver, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed no. If there is anyone who would like to speak about a specific agenda item. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading. Motion by Ms. Patton, second by Mr. Meisner. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed no. That motion is carried. Anything that you removed from the consent agenda?
Please approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Leo, second by Patton, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed no. Motion is carried. Informational items?
Mr. Mayor and Council, one informational item tonight, that's the report of Alderman Hinkes' travel to the Metropolitan Mayor's Legislative Meeting in Raleigh, which was December 12th and 13th.
I'd like to have the minutes replayed, that says the Metropolitan Mayor's Legislative Work Session and not a reaffirmation. I don't know what we're going to make. You were working with Mr. Hinkes?
Yes, sir.
Public hearing? They didn't go back, right? Oh, I like that cigarette. Okay, public hearing, Mr. Riverberry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked the city's Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Manager Warren Wood to come to voting and present for the item two, council by opening up the public hearing.
Mayor, I am pleased to see the city council chair, Mr. Mayor, to come. Tonight, we do have a public hearing as required by the Vol. General Statute regarding utilizing the installment purchase method of debt financing for the Hickory-Kataba wastewater treatment plant upgrade and expansion. Now, that's a long title. What that is, is any time you're going to have a security interest in a piece of real property, in this case, the Hickory-Kataba wastewater treatment plant, and borrow funds against that, it triggers two things. It triggers a public hearing, and it also triggers a local government commission's approval. So this is the public hearing component of proposing the installment purchase method of financing for that project. And in essence, it's really no different than what you might do when you go to bank to borrow money to renovate or upgrade your home, putting the improvements up. It's collateral enough that we will hear. Just a little background, all this is going through the local government commission, and ultimately, this type of financing require their approval. North Carolina is unique in having a local government commission doing this sort of approval for local government borrowing. We are one of just a few that do it this way. And the reason we do it this way is because during the Great Depression, North Carolina had the second most local government defaults in the country, defaulting on their debt payments. And Florida was number one. And since the creation of a local government commission defaulting on debt, North Carolina is really the exception. They don't handle it that much. So the LGC's role in this borrowing process will include, we'll have an application that can go to them. They'll review all the documents related to that. They'll review our water sewer system's ability to repay or service the loan, and ultimately, they'll grant approval only after they're satisfied that we can service the debt. So that's what the local government commission's role in this process is. And where we are in the process, they require staff to go to Raleigh to meet with them, to talk about the project. Staff did that. They require a resolution of support for the project from city council. You did that at your last meeting. And then we have the public hearing that's required to begin tonight. And then Friday, we will finalize and send to the LGC the formal application. This is part of what will be included. And ultimately, February 5th will be the meeting of the LGC where they'll consider this type of financing if city council chooses to move forward with it. And they ultimately will certify the agreement between the city and the lending institution of the bank. So that's where we are in the process. Just a little bit of background, again, this is for the Hickory-Kataba wastewater treatment plant. The voters of Hickory in 1990, Mr. Meiser, I think was on the council, approved a bond referendum, approving the construction of a regional water plant. So at that time, the voters of Hickory said, "We're getting into the regional utility business, and we talk about the importance of economy of scale, having more customers to spread your fixed costs across." And looking back in the newspaper, that bond referendum passed, I think it was 85% in favor, 15% against, so it was overwhelming. And a few years later, we completed the regional water plant. And really, since that time, our focus with utilities has been regional. We have always focused. And when I say region, historically, that's meant Hickory Metro area. And also, you'll see in a minute, we have a partnership with the Kataba County relating to the upgrade of this plant. And our partnership in utilities with Kataba County goes back to 1996, when we entered into our first revenue sharing agreement with them. And that was them, that particular agreement was them getting water service, city water to Van Oak Elementary out of Highway 10. So that was the first regional revenue sharing partnership we had with the county. We've had a number of those since then. And we'll fast forward to 2003. The city of Hickory purchased the town of Kataba's water and wastewater system, and that added 500 new water and sewer customers to Hickory's utility system. So we've had, we have owned the system in Kataba for 10 years now. And also, in 2003, Kataba County purchased the right to have 100,000 gallons of wastewater per day treated by the Hickory-Kataba plant. So we've had a partnership with them, again, for 10 years on that particular plant in Kataba. And in 2006, Kataba County and Hickory City Council agreed to upgrade and expand the plant to 1.5 million gallons per day, with half of that being reserved for Kataba County. So we have actually committed to these upgrades six years ago. So this is not new. This is all coming to a head now. And at your last meeting in 2012, the cost-sharing agreement was approved by Hickory City Council with the county, and how those upgrades would be financed. And we agreed in the agreement that it'd be a 50-50 partnership on all the cost-related upgrading of that plant. So that's a little bit of history on our utility approach, or our original approach to our utilities in the county of Kataba system. Okay, and we'll look at some numbers now. So here's some estimated construction costs for the Hickory-Kataba wastewater treatment plant upgrade and expansion. We have our bids in. The low bid was 10.2 million. Those will be coming to you in the form of a contract to approve in the near future meeting. We also have a contract for administration and management of that construction at 520,000. We'll build in a contingency of about $1 million, which is 10%. And the total budget, projected budget, will be about 11.8 million. So that's what we'll be looking at financing.
How much does the county pay it?
Fifty, fifty. And I've got another slide that breaks it all around.
You said we're going to finance the whole amount?
Correct.
But they will pay it?
And that's a great point, because they can't, we have to take on 100% of the debt. We will be the borrower of 100% of the debt, because we own the facility, we own the plant. The county can't borrow against something they don't own. So that's where the revenue share for the payback agreement came into play, where they would pay 50% of the cost.
The actual debt's not 100%, though. It's closer to 90?
I've got that one. I've got that one.
Who got the low bid? Jimmy Lance?
Jimmy Lance. And that has not come to you yet in terms of the contract.
Is that out? And then who's going to be the contract administrator?
Agent Floyd. Okay. So here are the ins and outs of the actual agreement the city will have with a lending institution or a bank. We'll borrow through the installment purchase method of financing, 9.9 million dollars for the upgrade and expansion to this facility. And the reason it's 9.9 million is anything below 10 million is called bank-qualified, meaning the bank gets some tax break if it's below 10 million dollars. So we're going to get a better interest rate than we would if the amount were over 10 million. We got a very competitive rate, 2.3%. It's actually a little lower than 2.3%. And we got two bids from two banks, and those will be coming to you at a future meeting as well. We're going to prove all those right now. We've got them on Monday. So that's a, we feel really good about the interest rate that we got on that loan. The duration will be 15 years. And again, the debt service payments will be shared 50-50 with Kataba County. Here's the next slide. Well, and our approximate share of the debt service payments will be $400,000. We will make the 800,000, it'll be less than that, but we'll just round numbers. The $800,000 annual debt service payment, the city shares, half of that, 400,000. Kataba County got paid the other half. Okay, here's where we get some more numbers on how this is going to work. So the total projected cost of the project, 11.8 million, we're going to borrow 9.9 million. And that's going to leave 1.9 million. So we'll have zero left. Where's that 1.9 million going to come from? The cash upfront, shared 50-50 between Hickory and Kataba County. So it's $957,000 each, which will come out from, our share will come out of the water and sewer funds, capital reserve. And again, the debt service payments will be shared 50-50. And the reason that, again, the 9.9 is important. We had to keep it below 10 million to get the better rate. We felt like that was something we needed to do. Any questions so far?
And it does not drain our capital reserves, so it's, it's...
No, the water and sewer fund has furnished us with that.
And we got plenty, plenty left for all foreseeable anticipated projects.
Yes, this is, on the horizon, the next largest project, as years out, will be the sludge composting facility. But this is, we don't have anything major coming up that's going to this scale.
And we're on track with our capital reserve.
And closing books on the Northwest?
Almost. And we felt really good. And that was a project that came in very favorably in terms of the financing as well. So we've done well the last, the Northeast plant and this one in terms of financing.
There's a pay, I know that there have been some payments made to the county, or anticipated being made to the county. By developers crossing, weren't they paying? Will we get benefit of any of that?
Those were their fees. We have our own.
Okay.
Now, we won't get anything from the county. So the issue at hand here, per the way the public hearing is structured in the general statutes, is the financing concept that was just presented for this project, the Hickory-Kataba wastewater treatment plant upgrade and expansion, appropriate for this project? The question isn't, should we be in Kataba? Should we be partnering with Kataba County? The question is, is this project, is the financing that was presented for this project appropriate? Without, we're going to answer any more questions. We'll sit down.
Okay. For the public hearing, we will allow 15 minutes for those who are speaking against the proposal. That would be to say this concept is not appropriate. And then we'll allow 15 minutes for those speaking in favor. That's the normal way, the normal order. We ask that there are multiple speakers, that they share their time. To try to stay within the 15 minutes, but as always for the last 11 years, if you want to be heard and you feel you have something to add that hasn't been said, you will have a chance to say it. We ask that you be polite, no cheering, no cheering. And with that, I declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak against this proposal. Or anyone who'd like to speak for this proposal. If there being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
I'm in approval.
I'll say it.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mr. Liam. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed no. That motion is carried and announced. Selection of voting delegates of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, Anthony Golds, Golds. Who all is going to be attended this conference?
Can I, is the mayor attending?
That pretty much says it.
I make a motion that the mayor be appointed.
I'll say it, man.
Any discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed no. That's unanimous.
Thank you for going.
It'll look good on your resume.
We do. You know what's going to be. It's good.
Well, and in fact, sitting on the Board of Directors, I also know what went into the process to take it from 73 potential goals to 50 potential. And then we're going to try to take it down to a more workable level. So...
Would you care to give a sense of what the League anticipates with the new legislation?
Well, I will tell you, the League...
Local government friendly?
Well, it depends on your perspective. I think they're local government friendly, because I think the principles that they, that they're going to stand for are those that will serve our citizenry well, and keep us on a reasonable financial path, will keep our communities and homes and cities fairly safe. And, but there are people within the League that disagree with me. The League, you know, as a body, the League has a more conservative, a more liberal bent. I hate to use those terms, but just so you know, the League has a more liberal bent than do the county commission. So there inevitably has always been some conflict between the objectives and goals of the League of Municipalities and the county commission. And so it depends on exactly where you sit politically as to whether you think that they're city-friendly, municipality-friendly, or not. We have been told that they are going to protect our revenue sources, and we're not going to have to ante up like we did under the East League administration. And we certainly know that we will not be the first place they look, like we were under the East League administration. So I guess I feel like, I feel very good about things. There are things on the advocacy goals that most of the people up here would not want to see on the goals. But that's, that's the way of, that's the way our government runs, and that's the way people of laws conduct their business. I'm not, I didn't vote yes on all 50 of the items. However, I respect the opinions of those who vote differently than I do. So does that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah.
I know everybody wants to see tax reform, but it's kind of like everybody wanted to see the fiscal cliff averted. So, you know, they may just declare that we now have reform. We now have reform, and thus, thank you, congratulations. We have reform. That's kind of what we did on the cliff, right? So we are skidding along in cliff faster than ever, but that's okay. But I will, I will plan to make a report back to this committee, to this council, after that advocacy goal is completed.
Thanks for going. And it's good for us to...
Well, and I will tell you, as we're talking about that, I have been flattered to be asked to co-chair the General Government Committee of the League of Municipalities. Should be an interesting year. The Subcommittee on Citizen Input, I guess I was not here for that discussion, so I guess I'd like to... We're talking about amendment to the charter, right?
That's a possibility.
I mean, if we change, we have to amend the charter, right?
You could perhaps enact a policy that council approve that would move that particular area of discussion to a certain part of the agenda, and do it for, unless or until council decides otherwise, or you can amend the charter.
I guess I'd rather, I'm talking out loud, and this is for the committee, but I'd rather amend the charter, because then if it doesn't work out, then we got to go back and undo the amendment of the charter, change it back.
I think we have some policies in place that the Subcommittee can discuss. And I don't think it's going to take long to iron that out or figure that out.
All meetings will be public, right?
Yes, sir.
And I would like to have, since, I think it'd be ironic if our Subcommittee before voting did not ask for citizen input. So I would like to ask that we have citizen input in this. And so what is exactly the scope of the committee?
The scope of the committee, according to the motion that was made, is to decide the language for getting citizens input at the beginning of the meeting.
So we're talking about tax?
Correct.
Any other comments or questions about that issue?
No, but I, well, I hope that we're going to get it has some other places to deal with this. You know, some surrounding communities about our size. I would be willing to be software and places that are possible. Not some sample, bring that to us, and just how the people...
Well, what I was going to mention, and appreciate the opening there, is right now I've got staff gathering lots of different data. I've got them looking back several years through council minutes, just to find out how many people speak, what tends to be the typical topic. Have people spoken about items at the end of the agenda, that were on the agenda, you know, that kind of stuff. As well as looking, we hope that the school of government, between the school of government and the League of Municipalities, we can get the whole data for the whole state in terms of how municipalities take public comment, when in Arizona they take it. And then we'll supplement that with some specific communities that are more like Hickory, to see how they do as well.
I did a limited survey of communities in this immediate area, but I did not go outside of this immediate area.
I mean, one of the things that I think that the committee will address, I assume, is, I think we're statutorily obligated to receive public comments. So it's a matter of either before or after. Yeah, it's a matter, yeah, like you said, timing. And another question I would have, do we have a sense of when the committee might end?
That's what I was going to ask you all, when you wanted to meet. I think, I gave our staff a deadline of next week to have gotten the data together. So I think if you were to go the week after that, we would be fine from a staff standpoint, providing, at least to this level.
I'd like to have, I'd like to have our meeting and plan to have a regulation date in the next meeting.
Now, when you say get public input, Mayor, are you talking about at the Subcommittee level or back at this?
The Subcommittee level.
So would you, would you see having two meetings of the committee where you discuss?
I think just one, one meeting. But we just allow citizens to offer input too, and...
You...
Before we vote. And then we vote on what language we're going to submit to the council.
Do you see that as a public hearing?
No.
Okay, just, just let citizens...
The public hearing will occur if we amend the charter at this meeting. But at this meeting, of course, as has been our practice, we would allow people to speak on the subject before we vote, if we get a motion and say it, and it passes.
But you're correct. You would have to have a public hearing at this meeting, either amend the charter or the city code. I think the agenda is actually in the city code. There's parts of the charter that reference the agenda. And that council would have to give some advice on how you amend both of those. But either one of them will take a public hearing to amend the charter by the entire body of city council.
Any other input or questions, comments?
Just a new deck, right, on the 14th, late to noon.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to have it before the next week. And I broke down all my conflicts for the next week and end. I'm ready to agree on a meeting time and date and place.
Okay, so you have next week, no city council meeting. I've given my staff the deadline of the 11th to get all their data together. You actually have a city council meeting on January 15th, so that will give you Monday. I just want to have a weekend to have the committee meet.
Well, let's do it that way.
Monday, the 14th. I will be unavailable that day. I'll be a court, I'll be that day. This rule will be...
You just said, schedule sometime after the next, and then have, and of course, meeting there is give more time to get staff input, just what they have.
It's very good my deadline is the 11th.
The 11th.
Unless you just, the only other thought I have from a staff standpoint is, as you're meeting, if you have other questions, if more comes up, and we all have not discussed this yet. But that's up to you all. I'm just trying to anticipate if there's other questions.
Well, why don't we just plan that the next meeting we have on the agenda, consideration of this issue. And if we have more questions and want resolution before we vote, then we won't vote on that meeting.
It'll be an update for sort of shit. But the idea is go ahead and knock it out as quick as we can, I mean, clearly.
Just have an update on the 15th, and then...
Well, hopefully, we have a recommendation to vote on the 15th. I'll see recently.
We wanted that.
We're going to meet on Monday, the 11th, of the 14th, the 14th. I don't have a conflict.
I had an 8:00 conflict and a 2:00 conflict, so...
I'm just taking it at 4:00. Is that okay with you, Mr. Fox?
I don't know. I think the baby, I mean, well, that's important.
You're right.
I mean, if you do it a little bit later, I'd like this meeting maybe to tie up.
Let's do it back.
Well, you know what? When your children work, you did what you need to do. And that's...
Or you keep them all day?
I forget that. I'd leave one meeting in the morning.
I can leave after 9:30, say 9:30 to whenever.
Oh, so you can get available in the morning?
Yeah.
Oh, listen, 9:30. Is that okay?
Are you available, Mr. Fox?
Mr. Berry, you available at 9:30? Are there any council members who want to attend this meeting who will not be available at the 11th? Is that okay? Can we just set that? 9:30 on the 14th? And no public meeting, but we will solicit public comment. Any appointments to any council submissions? Any petitions and requests? Questions requesting to be heard? Matters not on the agenda? General comments?
School will be starting back again tomorrow.
School will be started back again tomorrow, and I'll be there.
And you worked hard on it, you used it.
I know.
And so's Mr. Guest.
One, one little comment, it just, as you remember in your prayer to Bill McDonald and Susan, they're going through a tough time right now, man. Do you know anything else? I was there yesterday, and Bill is very lethargic, and Susan's had the flu for six days, extremely mad.
That's about right.
Yeah, he's, his oxygen level is maintained, but his strength and stamina is lacking. Just need to be prepared.
Is he up for visiting?
I would doubt it. He's at Ms. Britton's house. He's out of the hospital.
You can talk, give him a call when he talks up a minute.
And he struggles to talk to him at the hospital.
And former councilman, Norman Klein, passed away the other day. And I felt it appropriate to recognize his passing here at this meeting.
And I did want to express to the article in the paper that was written, I think it was excellent, top of character, foreign language very well.
Well, he, the last time I saw him was at the 50th anniversary of Lytham retiring. And I knew he was struggling, because he had to tell me he was struggling. But he had the biggest smile, like he always does. He looked like, like 15 years ago. So it's just inspiring. I will be representing the city at the celebration of the election of all of the North Carolina government officials, and that's true with all of them, next Saturday. And if anyone else would like to go, let me know, and I think we'll probably get in touch.
Is Saturday, is it the...
Saturday, the 12th.
The 12th, at the, during the inaugural events?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't figure it can't hurt to be on by, right?
I hear you. I may just show up, I may just show up too. Come on, show up.
Let me know.
Yeah, I will.
Folks, Happy New Year, 2013, more jobs. Motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Maitre, second by Mr. Patton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It's unanimous.